We'll call the order to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make sure we turn our telephones and. All right, do roll call please.
Here. Yes.
Here. Yes, here. Yes.
Here. Okay, we got some recognitions to start with.
Roni, you got this?
Yes, I'm doing the first one only, correct?
Yeah, I could pass out the secrets.
RB is proud to recognize the following regional NCWIT, which stands for National Center for Women and Informational Technology Aspirations in Computing Awards. Each year, high school students in grades nine through 12 who self-identify as women, gender queer, or non-binary are eligible to receive recognition for their aptitude and aspirations in technology and computing, as demonstrated by their computing experience, computing-related activities, leadership experience, tenacity in the face of barriers to access, and plans for post-secondary education. This year, 40 winners and 360 honorable mentions were selected from the more than 4,288 amazing, talented young applicants. Congratulations to Desiree LaRocque, freshman Northern Illinois affiliate winner and a national honorable mention.
Desiree, you could stay up here, and we'll recognize all the girls at the end again.
Sophia Arcos, senior Northern Illinois affiliate honorable mention. Autumn Halfpenny, senior Northern Illinois affiliate honorable mention. And I probably am not, I apologize, Emily Shu? Shu? Oh, I was right.
Is Emily out there?
Emily, senior Northern Illinois affiliate rising star. Claudia Tello, freshman Northern Illinois affiliate rising star. Congratulations to all of these amazing winners. Yeah, young ladies.
Claudia, Desiree, congratulations. Thank you very much. Is Hector, you have one staff recognition? Do you want to read that, or you want Ms. Towner to read that? Go ahead, Ms. Towner.
Okay. I was so excited to get this email, and I'm so excited to see this award we just gave out, because you know that the tech is my thing. One of our world language teachers has been selected as a Lynn Blad Expeditions, National Geographic 2021, Grosvenor Teacher Fellow. She was one of only 50 educators selected from across the U.S. and Canada. This professional development opportunity will allow her to bring geographic awareness to RB students. The Grosvenor Teacher Fellowship selects exemplary educators to embark on a life-changing voyage to one of the many remote and extraordinary environments the Lynn Blad fleet explores around the world. Congratulations to Jessica Maritzin.
Jessica's not here tonight, right, Hector? Jessica also spoke to the board, so this is the same teacher, I don't know if you remember, pre-COVID, but came in, she was doing, she asked us to remove all the furniture in her Spanish class, and she was doing a unique style of teaching Spanish this year and prior to COVID, and that was working out really well for her. So she's done a really nice job in her classes and taken on some new things in the classroom, but also, as you can see, outside the classroom as well.
Dynamic and innovative, right? And what I had, when she shared the news with the board, I just said to her that I was so excited for all of the opportunities that this will open up for our students, right? Because these kind of awards and affiliations outside of the four walls of our classroom bring so much enrichment to our students.
Absolutely. I believe that's it for recognitions.
Student Association Report.
Do we have members of SA here tonight? Oh, they're out there. Oh, my favorite part of the year, or of the meetings. No, no, no. This is the fun part, right? You guys are the greatest resource we have. We want to hear what you're doing.
Okay, so I'm over the past, I have to introduce myself. I'm Amanda DeForty, student spokesperson for SA. Over the past few weeks, we were collecting food, and we did two separate drop-offs to St. Leonard's Church in Berwyn. They have a smaller food pantry there. That was very, very successful, so successful to the point where I think we are starting to organize another one, and we just did that like two weeks ago. While I was there, I was talking to the woman, and even though it is a smaller food pantry, like I met families who were coming in while I was there, and it's so important, and RB did such an amazing job, having not just students, but parents, teachers, bringing in food. It was amazing. This week, not week, this month is Black History Month. AST, a Minority Empowerment Club, have been running events for this month. RB staff have decorated their doors. We had, they organized a spirit day where students were encouraged to wear all black in solidarity, and that was very successful. And Thursday, February 25th, they're going to have a movie night over Zoom. And Friday, February 26th, AST, Minority Empowerment Club, and OLS are going to be having a discussion over Zoom.
Hi, I'm Madison Lester, I'm the Treasure and Exec Board. Our second blood drive is tomorrow from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the staff parking lot, and our hope is to receive 32 donations in order to meet the number of donations we received at our last blood drive in November. Staff and students are both signed up to donate, and we also receive scholarship money for running the drives, which is posted in the local scholarship for seniors. We also did a two-day spirit week that allowed for equal participants from students in person, and we are planning on having our next spirit day next month on St. Patty's Day. So that's all, thank you.
Does the board have any questions for Student Association?
Any questions?
Um, I personally don't know, but come and you'll find out.
Are you guys attending in person or attending remote?
I'm in person.
I'm remote.
Okay, things going okay so far?
Yeah, everything's good.
I'm planning, there's a survey about going four days.
Yes, right?
I saw, and I think I'll be one of those students, so I'm really excited for that.
Tell all your friends to fill it out.
I know, I did.
We want as much representation from the student body as possible, please.
Okay.
Tell every, even, you know, all of you, tell everyone, you know.
Tell everybody.
Perfect. Well, thank you very much.
We're good?
Thank you.
Bye, guys. Have a fun night.
Sure you're not going to stay?
I'll leave.
I know, you got homework, I know.
Discussion, information items, COVID-19 transition.
Mary Ann, we'll pull up the numbers. As you can see, things are still continuing to trend in the right direction, as we only have one category in substantial, that's 109 cases, so we're significantly down in that category. While we have been in blue, I believe the last two or three weeks, it still is not, we were in orange at least once in the last four. Everything else is in the minimal transition level, including our positivity rates, both locally and in the Cook County. So from our weekly matrix that we're following, things are going in the right direction. On the next tab is obviously the plan, that has not changed, and Dr. Freitas is going to provide some updates on how student attendance is going, and as well as what steps are being taken to see if we can increase the number of days for students to come four days during the fourth quarter. In regards to vaccinations, we, you know, no new update. I think we're moving around in the right direction. We've had that one network with pillars, we were able to get 50 staff members vaccinated, as discussed at the last meeting, a majority of our staff are still seeking out some appointments on their own, or had already sought out some additional appointments. We have about 34 people on the list, so the next opportunity we get, or call we get where they have vacancies, we'll be sending that group. So I think we're still on pace to have a majority of the staff vaccinated by the start of fourth quarter, or at least have received their first shot by the start of the first quarter, or fourth quarter, excuse me. Dr. Freitas, you want to go into some of your points, please?
Good evening, board members, students, parents, and everybody from RB. So quick update on our plan, so the building admin, we're finalizing the steps that need to be taken to allow to 50% of enrollment to attend for four days. You know, this is a multi, you know, level approach, but we want to make sure we do this right. We're working with our maintenance team and staff to set up 51 classrooms to ensure social distancing. We're facilitating vaccination opportunities for staff. We are securing, and we have identified our blended learning rooms, overflow, the library study hall, the blended room, and the computer lab. And more importantly, we've created a survey so we can know what families will be sending their students for RB for in-person or continuing fully remote. The survey was sent last Thursday, the 18th, and now we're doing the important work, which is the follow-up. But I did want to share some preliminary data with the board. Currently, as 770 students have completed the survey, that's about 47%. The deadline is this Friday, so students, please complete the survey. As far as parents, we had 495 parents that are registered in Skyward, about 38% uncomplete the parent survey. And it basically asks two key questions. The first one, for the students, and I'll share the results. Please indicate your preferred instruction model for fourth quarter. 44% chose in-person, 55% chose to remain fully remote. And then out of that group, which of the following in-person learning scenarios did you prefer? It's about 50/50 for the students, 50% would want to continue with the two days, and 50% would want the four days. For the parents, the same question. Please indicate the preferred instruction model for your student for fourth quarter. 62% indicated they would want their student to come in, 37% indicated they're going to continue fully remote. And for those that chose to be in-person, 77% prefer the four days, and 22% prefer, excuse me, 77% prefer the four days, 22% prefer the two days. So quickly, I do want to respond why the two-day option, you know, for those that are thinking about it. Guys, initially, you know, we weren't considering the two days, but based on feedback from students, teachers, and families, some people felt we needed to preserve that two-day option. Students and families have established unbreakable routines and have committed to professional and personal responsibilities around the two days. What's more important, equity. We're giving students and families what they need to be successful, and that is the key in the great work we do here with equity. Now I wanted to dig a little deeper in the data. So as of today, you know, as a few hours ago, we had 788 responses, 353 in-person for fourth quarter, this is students, 435 will stay remote, 172 chose two days, 181 chose four days. So two days a week, we would have max, as of right now, 354 students, that would be our highest number. But again, we're only about halfway done, and now comes the phone calls and follow-ups, so we still have a lot of work to do. So what are we doing with all this data? We have created an Excel spreadsheet with tabs for all learners. We have three tabs, fully remote, two days, four days, and we have a fourth tab for the students that haven't responded at the moment. We're going to get that list to the teachers' hands. They will cross-reference that list with the class rosters. Next, we will give a Google form to the teachers so they can indicate which class period may be over capacity. Then we're going to continue working with Berham, our new facilities manager, to see if we can correct some spacing issue. If not, we will utilize a blended space with an alpha split for teachers and class periods that are over capacity. So a student may have to utilize a blended space periodically two days a week in some classes, but should never be in the blended space for all day. Like, the student could be there for a period if for some reason that class, you know, happened to be full. If a student decides they want to come in, we're going to do everything in our power to make sure that student comes in. If the student wants to stay home, again, we have to be flexible, the student can stay home. Admin will be communicating the expectation with families and students as we evolve. But again, guys, we are in the middle of this actual work, and now we have a lot of phone calls and emails and follow-ups to make sure we engage everybody, because we must know who can come in so we can plan and create the conditions that are safe and conducive to learning. Currently, we're implementing targeted intervention for third quarter. We're permitting students that have Ds and Fs and students with IEPs to attend school daily, so we have some students that have been coming in four days a week. Attendance, we're still averaging just about 200 students, you know, daily, and again, some of the reasons, I mean, I know the weather is a little better now, right? But, you know, temperature has been cold and it's been snowy, you know, remote learning, you know, has worked, has worked for some. So those are, you know, some of the reasons there, and again, you know, the two days have been working for some students, right? Staffing, we're facilitating the vaccinations. You know, I want to say, you know, majority of us should be vaccinated by the first week of March, you know, including myself, so that is good news. For lunch, we're still providing grab-and-go lunches to every student. Guys, get your food, and I want to tell everybody, no one should ever feel embarrassed about grabbing food, okay? I appreciate the students that grab, but no one should ever feel, guys, this is food for you guys, okay? Maybe your parents are working, maybe you're going through something. Get the food, pop it in the microwave, and eat it. Guys, I eat it good, too, it's delicious. Activities and athletics, we're currently streaming athletic contests live on two platforms. All contests in the main gym can be viewed through the National Federation of High Schools, I believe there is a small fee, but it's kind of like buying a ticket and going to a game, $5, $10. All contests in our other venues may be viewed at RBHS208.net/RBHSlive. For boys and girls basketball, we're currently allowing up to 50 fans, but unfortunately for the other sports, we're not allowing fans at the moment.
And that's not our choice, right? That's just based on the guidelines?
No, that is, excuse me, that is not, that is based on the guidelines recommended by the state, by the county, and the IHSA, okay? You guys know that socially distancing, right, that's very important, kind of in this environment. And of course, always wearing your mask and washing your hands. So at the moment, Dr. Skink, that summarizes my COVID-19 transition plan report.
And I see you got the last sentence, probably a lot of parents that they're watching are here tonight, want to make sure they hear that last sentence, under clubs.
Oh, excuse me. Guys, clubs are up and running, and remember, RB is currently working on culminating events such as prom graduation and the Apollo Awards. Guys, we are not, we have not forgotten about those key events. We're working with parents right now, we're working with admin team to make sure that we celebrate the students the right way. I know I get the calls and I get the emails, guys, that's one of our top priorities, to make sure we celebrate them safely for all the parents out there, and the students, you guys deserve it as well.
Thank you, Dr. Freitas. Mr. Smith, and that concludes our report, unless there's questions?
Questions?
So a couple of questions, Dr. Freitas, on the survey.
Yeah.
And how the administration uses that information. So you indicated that both parents and students were being surveyed.
Correct.
So whose opinion matters more, I would ask? If a student says, "I want to be fully remote," and the family says, "I want my student in class," how do you navigate those waters?
Well, we call the parents, we call the families. I mean, guys, mom and dad are their boss, okay? I want to be clear. But I do want to include the students in this conversation, because I believe any good decision should be decided as a collective, whether family and admin team, a teacher team, but no, parents will have the other matches, and we will be following up with the parents. You know, hey, Mary, hey, Joe, complete the survey, so we'll be engaging the parents in our follow-ups.
Okay, thank you, that's.
Yep.
I assumed you were going to say, but I wanted to hear you say that.
No, 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 of course, of course.
And then, and since people were given choices of two days or four days.
Yes.
Is it possible we would have some students here two days and some four days? I mean, what are, how many, there's a lot of permutations possible now with the student opinion, the parent opinion, some people want two and that's four. How does all that get worked out? And what do we have capacity for?
So, I mean, our plan has been 50% enrollment, which roughly is 800, you know? So capacity, you know, I'd say, I mean, according to a plan that we've shared, would be, you know, 800, correct, you know?
And it might be helpful, I think, for those watching at home to go over one more time why lunch doesn't work. I think that's the question I get all the time, I think a lot of us get that. So talk through why the lunch room doesn't work, and especially with our current schedule.
And so, you know, the problem is, right, teaching and learning in this environment, we have to try to avoid crowding. You know, we have to try to avoid, you know, people opening their mouth, eating and drinking, and the aerosol, and the particles that really come out. It's, I know it sounds silly, but, right, eating in a restaurant, which a cafeteria is a restaurant, is probably one of the most dangerous things, you know, that we can do, you know, at the moment. And our job is safety, we preach safety. As you guys have seen, we've brought more students, we're strategically opening up our school, and I believe that's what kept us safe, we're doing it right. But, I mean, guys, eating in a building, eating lunches, is probably one of the most dangerous things we can do, and we just, I mean.
Well, the guidelines are more than, no more than 50 people in a cafeteria, so we'd have to spread around the students throughout the building.
Yeah.
And then they have to take off their masks to eat. And so even back this summer, when we met with the full committee, with parents, teachers, students, you know, that was discussed, as our priority was to try to get kids back in the building, even if that sacrificed the amount of time they could be in the building, and for how long. So that's why, you know, if you look at the plan, the next phase is try to get students back four days a week. You know, based on this summer, what will happen, what next fall will look like, will all depend on the governor and what the IDPH does with the guidelines. Unless they reduce the number of people that can be in one space, we're going to have to continue to look at a half-day schedule until they reduce those guidelines. So we're continuing to work on that, the Superintendent Association, the High School Superintendent Association is working with our lobbyists to try to work with the IDPH, so we understand some parents want to be back full-time like traditional, we're working towards that, we're just not there yet.
It's a difficult situation. We'll get it, we'll get it, start one piece at a time, right?
That's right.
Once we get the four days, and we can focus on next year, and focus on graduation, it's important.
We're only moving forward, we're only growing, we're not going backwards, we're only moving forward.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Freitas, for your report and all the hard work for your team.
Any further questions? Hello, Laura?
No, I'm good.
Mission statement, we were going to revisit this, right, Tom?
Yeah, Mr. Jacobs had prepared this for us back last February, and then COVID hit, and all of our attention for the last 18, or well, it's a full year now, I'm sorry, a full year has been focused on COVID and all, so I just had Mary Ann resubmit the mission statement examples that were voted on by the board, and if Tom wants to take a quick five minutes to just summarize the color coding and some of that, that'd be great.
Thank you, be happy to do it.
Do you want to switch back?
No, no, I can see it from here, but there's, I think on my page 12, there is a, we should start with the existing mission statement, which is color-coded. Yep, that one. So, you know, I think we're starting with the existing one, just because we obviously need to measure it against whatever we're proposing, measuring it against what we already have. The idea of highlighting who, what, how, why is fairly self-explanatory, I think. I mean, in general, mission statements, as I've understood them, are really answering the question, why? Why do you exist? But from the why, it goes into these other questions, who, what, and how. Now, you can see in, I think the thing to highlight here is in the existing one, it's actually a relatively balanced mix of four of these colors. And that is a key starting point, because as we'll see in our options, there is a bit of a departure. Now, I'm pointing this out because when you actually, just a quick thing about the why, if mission statements really are about why, you can see there's relatively little reference to it, at the very end, it talks about a diverse and changing world. And I actually think that makes a lot of sense, because the why question in education is, you really don't have to explain to anyone why you have a school. Like, that's, you know, in companies, that's much more difficult, in some organizations, but in the school, that's like one thing we all agree is important. So there's more other colors specifically as to the who, what, and how. And so, having said this, if we can go to the next page, and maybe we have to, we can probably reduce the size a little bit, so that we can see maybe all of them together. So we had already, in, last year at some point before COVID hit, we went through a process where we actually reduced the number of statements a little bit, and we sort of took a straw poll, straw poll, which you can sort of see who was leaning towards which versions. I would say here, again, the biggest difference is that there is three relatively brief statements in the range from seven to 15 words, and there's two longer ones. One falls sort of in the middle at 36, and then there's a longer one at 73, which goes above the 60 that we have now. But I think the length is something that actually is a real discussion point, should be, in my opinion. And I'll, what I'm saying now is a little bit of my bias or my opinion, but this goes back to the existing one, which where we have a balance of answering these points. I happen to believe that this balance is useful and important, because I think no matter what we do, there will be no student ever who will remember this, and that's fine. I think this mission statement primarily exists to remind board members of what we've signed up for, what we're here to do, how we're supposed to set policy. I think it's also good for administration to see, and for all the teachers. And so that's where the shorter statements, where you can see different combinations of color, one is red and blue, one is red and green, to answer to these different points, but in my opinion, they're actually too short. If we agree that schools are a good idea, we already know we agree on this, and then we just go with the short ones, we just go a little further, but to me, that doesn't really give a sense of what an elected board actually sort of leans towards. So that's where I think somewhere between the 36-word statement one and the 73, and I'll just say the 73 one was for me, and it could easily be reduced to 60 or below, if that's important to somebody. But the, what you can see in the 36-word statement is that it's a, it's a good mix of colors, with the exception of yellow, which is how. I happen to believe that answering, or putting some language in that talks to how, adds real flavor, that's like the spice in a meal, that actually sort of shows, it tips the hand of a board maybe a little more towards how we see education unfolding. And so specifically what I would recommend, we should also talk about timing of this discussion. You know, we didn't choose that, but now we're a month and a half before an election. I actually think it might be prudent to continue the conversation, to take advantage of the fact that all of us here, who have already started the discussion, I think it would be good to continue pushing it. However, I'm not necessarily in favor of voting one in, because we don't quite know who might be on the board starting April or May, and because it's a mission statement, I think that would actually be a good opportunity to let potentially new members weigh in on this also.
Tom, anybody running could weigh in on it.
I think, I think it's prudent for this board to finish the work that it started, two years. You're talking about the mission statement, and out of the mission statement will come your goals eventually, your strategic plan, which the new board then will have opportunity to craft. The mission statement will stand for a period of time. You don't get a new one, or even evaluate a new one, every two years, every four years. So I think by putting it in, it actually gives the current board that legacy, the work that's completed, it allows the next board to move, to pick up, and to start building on the work. I just think, you know, the more we linger, you know, we're going to languish, it's going to die on the vine, and we can't evaluate the work, we cannot function as a board is designed to function. Our job is to set the goals of a district. Our job is to set the goals of a district, identify the data that will tell us that those goals are being met, we hire one employee. We can't do that minus COVID without getting this done. So the longer we put this off, the longer we're just a lame board.
Well, I don't think anyone's suggesting we put it off unless, unless we're ever.
I think we have the discussion now, for sure. I mean, I'm not, I'm not here, we don't have a discussion.
Right, and I would also say, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with that we're, like, that we can't act, that old mission statement is still in place. It's going to be enacted until we do something different. And I happen to believe that the existing mission statement is actually pretty good. So, you know, I rain on this too, and I said we have to have conversations about the future of education, and of course we should, but I'm saying, I don't see, I don't quite have the same sense of urgency, but obviously that's up for discussion.
We can't get our goals, we're two years without meaningful goals to use in our evaluation in moving the district forward. And that's really unprecedented. Again, it's a COVID year, but for any organization to just kind of be without this driving force to measure its progress, I, I just think it's uncomfortable.
We have goals, we're just looking to redo the goals. Not that we don't have goals.
We have goals, but I don't, I am not convinced that we are moving towards those goals or targeting those goals as we had been. We're not making the same kinds of decisions for those goals because we opened the dialogue looking at the mission with the idea that we were going to revisit the goals.
Well, so do you have a preference of these? I mean, I guess we probably need to have that discussion. I mean, Laura, do you have a preference?
No, I think we should. I think we should have kind of like a work, you know, the next meeting, maybe 45 or a half hour before the meeting, come and craft it, pick it, do it. You know, we, we have to eventually do it. And then it could be posted for comment, say, this is the one we've crafted, we've got all the words, you like it, and then you can leave it posted for comment. If anybody really objects to it, or anybody running objects to it, then we can revisit that, but.
Should thought, Gina?
I, I mean, I'm, I only have a few meetings left, so I, I feel kind of.
So you have to add an extra 30 minutes of room.
Right, no, I don't mind doing it, because I think it's going to be a longer discussion than probably any of us anticipate it to be. But at the same time, like, from my perspective, because I'm the only one here who I'm definitely not coming back, you know, it, it does seem to me that if somebody's coming new on the board, it would be nice for them to be able to have an opportunity to weigh in.
But if they're running, they can certainly comment.
They can certainly weigh in.
So I kind of agree with Laura, to like, set the tone, so that the, the rest, like, they can, in essence, what you're saying is like, hit the ground running, right? Like, some of the hard work's been done, now let's go on to.
Well, I don't know, I think the next part's going to be harder than this part, but.
For the goals?
Yeah. I think in the.
Sure, but then, but.
Strategic plan behind the goals is really the product of the matter, right? That's what we're getting.
Then you're not pushed back another week, month, two months.
No, I don't, I don't have any anticipation of, of, Bill, anything next, next meeting? Maybe we come in early?
Yeah. It's not close to that, I mean, I think we're close.
I think we've got to come in prepared and ready to go, if you know.
Be open.
It's open? Open session?
Yeah, yeah, I think it would be open, and then we could get.
So you consider that like a special meeting?
Just start it, move the agenda, we'll work, Mary Ann and I will work on that, it's not a problem.
And I think we come with, you know, I think now that we're revisited, I think the, the last year is certainly, this ever-changing world, right? It is, is, you know, if ever we knew that that was a true statement, it is today more than before, right?
And I think, I mean, I think that's a great idea. I'm totally up for meeting, you know, early and so forth. We have to find a place to discuss it, right? That's the most important thing. What I was sort of hoping to maybe gauge a little bit is whether anybody feels strongly about this balance argument, because I'll just, I mean, I, you know, I don't know how the discussion's going to unfold, but I will tell you, for me, to take the existing mission statement and strip it so bare that it skips a couple of the things that it has now, does not make sense. And so I'm just, you know, telling you now, I don't know where I'm coming from, whether you already have comments about that or not, might give us a little bit of a sense of, is this a 30-minute discussion? Or is this a couple of 30-minute discussions, which if they're really good ones, and engaged, and even some community members show up to talk about it, and teachers, I'd be thrilled.
Right. I'm not married to my, you know, the one I submitted, or the one that has my name next to it, in fact, like, now that it's been almost a year, right, like, you kind of think, oh, huh, okay. But my thought process in, you know, I'm not sure where this comes from, but is that, yes, every member that, of the organization, from, you know, the, the paraprofessionals to the administration, and everyone in between, can say it, right? And so when you're getting up to, like, I mean, there's a reason why our phone numbers are only, we used to be seven digits and now are 10, it's because it's a memory, it's a memory thing, right? So if we want everyone in the organization to be able to internalize this, and be able to, and, and I, this is like such a teacher thing to say, but like, be quizzed on it, for lack of a better, right, like analogy, I mean, I don't think the administration's going to go down the hall and stop teachers, what is it? Tell me now, right? But they should be able to like.
You know what, though, Mona, but they, but they really can, like, what have you done this week that bears out our mission statement? How are you living our mission statement? What have you done? What have you implemented? How, how are you being true to the mission statement? Right, like?
So it's, so are you saying it's more than just regurg, like, I'm saying they should be able to regurgitate it, or have internalized it, and you're saying it's more than that?
Well, as a board, do you, do you, do you want people just to be able to regurgitate it, or do you want people to live it?
Have you ever recited a mission statement?
Yeah, I can tell you mine, District 100, oh, Jesus, now I'm on the spot, I'm like, well, inspire the passion for learning in every child, sorry.
Because it's short.
Because it's short, that's what I'm saying.
But I think it's important to split hairs a little bit, and we had some discussion, we had the IASB person, and there's vision statements, which are future and aspirational. So District 100, that's a vision statement.
That is a vision statement.
Right, this is a mission statement, this is how you operationalize it. I'm sorry, this is how you live it, and then the goals are how you operationalize it. And I'm sure there's professionals who can say that a lot better than I just did. But I think, I think it's a great idea to have a focused discussion on this, absolutely. I would like to start better than where we left off a year ago, though. Like, instead of having all five options, can we somehow get some.
Yeah.
Guide rails here, that we can, when we meet next time, we know we want to go with all the colors.
Start with one, and then we could say, I mean, I love your conversation about the balance, having a little more than one line.
Yes, I definitely appreciate the color coding and all of that.
So I think maybe we start with one that's fuller.
Yeah.
Because you can always, what I've learned as a data person, never collapse resolution in the beginning. So you start with your more fuller mission statement, and you have lots of room to call.
Sure, agree.
It would just be interesting to know, I mean, I've been in education 27 years, I've had lots of mission statements, I couldn't tell you any of them anywhere I worked, except the district, that it was a shorter one, and we lived it, and we knew it, and it was on everything. It was, that was what we stood for.
So in the format.
That is why we were there, that every day we woke up in the morning because we were bearing out this mission, like, this is why we were there. And it was really powerful.
So we take, yes, we take the fuller one, and then we say, these words aren't adding anything, and you can trim.
That would be starting with 73, then.
Ah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, if you don't mind, why don't, why don't Tom and I work on this over the next two weeks, and we'll come with two or three, we'll both kind of figure that out, and we'll kind of start there, and move.
Yeah, right.
And we'll kind of have a plan of where we want to go, and kind of track this through. If you don't mind, Tom, we, we can work on that outside of this over the next two weeks.
Sounds great.
And then you have your colors, so that way it does show the balance, and anything fuller can be called, as opposed to having to find out what's missing and put it back in.
No, I totally agree, and actually, and Gina, your point is, that's, you know, the best work that I've seen in this thing, is that you quite literally, you say the same thing, it's just, it's longer or shorter for different purposes. And so sometimes, you know, there's maybe a time where you have the medium one, or whatever, the longer one, but then, whether it's a vision, or a mantra, or, you know, those are the times when you actually know you've really discussed it through, because you can do that relatively easily and say, out of however many words, those are the five that are the most important that we want people to remind. So that, I, I think that would be great, if we end up there.
And I think one of those words should be an ever-changing world. I think that's really important for that one, because I see that in almost every single one of them, and I think that one's really important to have in there.
Except for Tom's.
Well, yeah, right, this past year.
Yeah.
Well, it's in our old one, and it's in a couple and three of the new ones, right? So it's definitely in, we just lived, we are living it right now, we're, you know, Hector just gave a, you know, 15-minute speech on it, the changing world.
Well, Leah and Michael, we would expect you to be involved in this discussion as student advisors, because the students that are graduating in two months or three months, right?
Yeah, and I also think, I mean, I think that 30 to 40 range is pretty good, because you don't want to make it too long, but it's also, like, I, I agree with the vision statement versus the mission statement, too, because I think having it via mission statement, as in, we don't have to memorize that, but it's like a culminating way of saying what our mission is, versus a vision statement where you could live by that. So, yeah, I agree with that, too.
I mean, I'm at a current place where it's innovate, collaborate, elevate, that's the vision statement, that's like the three words, right? And there's a longer mission statement about transparency and accountability, and all of those other government things. So I think there's, yeah, start big and go, and then shrink it down, that seems like a good path.
Well, and when we look at the words, I mean, you don't want to, you know, constrain yourself by saying only four words. You start to look at it and say, is this redundant? Is there any redundancy? You don't need to say anything twice, and you'll find out that there are sometimes sentences or phrases that are repeated, and then you can take those out, too. It's like reducing fractions.
Yeah, like, in the current mission statement, I didn't like have said partnership twice within like two sentences, it was a little repetitive.
So that's, that's a perfect deal thing to call, you know? We only need to say it once, maybe even more succinctly, and that's how you start to trim it.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we're moving, that's the main thing, right? Like, we're keeping, now, we put it back on the table, right? We're out of trauma mode, put it back on the table, we're moving forward, like, that's the most important thing, right? And I have to say, slide 18, who doesn't love a good Jim Collins quote? Like, I was like, oh, I love him.
6:30 March meeting? Right?
Yeah.
And so just, I mean.
Maybe 6:15.
At the end of that time, if it's not done, it just moves it to the next meeting, and it will continue, but at least you're not.
Yeah.
Just, you know, getting some committee work in before the actual business of the board.
We would be at that meeting, too, right?
Please, yes.
So 6:15? All right, we're going to discuss the student advisors.
So I thought we were doing that at the last meeting.
Yeah, this is just a placeholder, because it was advised, and then more discussion would occur as we got near the application process.
Okay.
We wanted to put it on there as a placeholder, that it was asked for a future discussion.
And I know October 11th, Hector's going to work on that with the student body.
Correct, that's a placeholder to get some more feedback to the board.
So a little history for the board, there had been a board member that said there are oftentimes ideas that we wanted to work on, and then they would fall off the agenda. And so he wanted to make sure that they would be either retained as new business or under discussion, and even if we moved them to the next month, we didn't forget about them until we intentionally said, we just don't need to talk about that anymore, so. Guess with so many things to keep track of, I, that's awesome. Yeah, so that's why, you know, those, you know, could be there, well, just like we did with our student advisors, you know, it was on the agenda for a while, and until we finished getting through it, yeah.
I was going to say, like, one example, I know we talked about the ski and snowboard trip, which I don't know if there was ever a decision put on that, but like, that's one example that I think was falling off, but I don't know if we made a decision on that.
We had to make a decision on that because the chalet was not open, and we did not, could not accommodate the safety guidelines.
Yeah, we did make a decision.
It was kind of, it wasn't, it didn't come back to the board, because it was kind of a, it was within the administration.
It didn't come back around.
The focus of the, we did mention it, though, I believe. All right, visitor statements, I know we have some visitors here, this is great, we always encourage that, I'm going to read the statement. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions and make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. All right, so do we have a list ahead? Dr. Freitas, who's going first?
Okay, so you have three minutes, I'll wave my hand when you're on your last 30 seconds, okay?
Sounds good.
So you can wrap up.
Charles Gray?
My name is Noah Breones, and I'm a junior here at RB. And I'm here tonight to offer some comments in support of our school's orchestra program and of our music teachers. More specifically, I would like to speak in support of making sure that we, in the orchestra program, can continue to have the same teacher, Mr. Matthew Loeb, in the next school year and beyond. So I've been playing the violin for six, since I was six years old, and in that time, I've only had four violin teachers, that is 11 years and four violin teachers. I think that much of my growth as a violinist is due to the stability and consistency in instruction through these many years. Of course, I know that my progress also depends a great deal on how much I work, how much work I put into my own practicing, but I also know that inspires me more to practice when I know that my teacher is someone who knows me. He knows how far I have come and how much more I need to do to get better. That strong relationship that I have with my teacher was built through several years and many lessons, and so I can rest assured that he has a solid plan for me going forward. However, our RB orchestra has not had the chance to build such a relationship with our teacher. I've been in RB's orchestra program since I was a freshman, and in these three school years, we've had a different teacher handling the orchestra every single year. This may not sound like a big deal to some, but to musicians, it makes a huge difference in our playing, learning, and growth as individuals and as a group, when we are given a chance to build a relationship. The more time and consistency we are given when we play our music, the better we play. This applies with our instruments, with each other as students, and with our teacher. I'm very thankful that I'm here at RB, that I'm studying here at RB, and I'm especially grateful for our music programs, that they don't, there are not a lot of schools that you come by with the kind of music programs that RB has. While things got a little challenging for orchestra players during the pandemic, I knew that there was still a lot to be thankful for. I know our music teachers worked hard to keep us all learning and still somehow able to make music together. Having a teacher like Mr. Loeb during this time, it truly did make a difference. Mr. Loeb didn't shy away from making the most of technology, especially, to help us make music together remotely and to stay engaged. I'm looking forward to learning more with Mr. Loeb in person, and to seeing how much progress our orchestra can make if we are given another year with the same teacher. And so I would like to ask you to please help us. Please help us make sure that we are able to keep our orchestra teacher, so that we, RB string musicians, can have the same stability that the band, choir, jazz band, and rock band students have been able to enjoy. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Noah.
All right.
I'll give you the wave at the 30 seconds, okay? Thank you.
Hi, I'm Victoria Barrow-Ronsetson, and I'm.
Hi, I'm Victoria Barrow-Renssen, and I'm the mother of Sophie Renssen, a junior and very involved music student here at RB. I understand that the board is considering cutting Mr. Matthew Loeb's position in half next year. This, of course, means that Mr. Loeb would be forced to seek a full-time position elsewhere. I'm here to speak not just about Mr. Loeb, but also about the RB Music Department and the impact that cutting Mr. Loeb's job would have. I understand that enrollment in music is down for next year and that this cut is being made entirely due to that. But I feel this is a very short-sighted move, especially in this case. First, Mr. Loeb is an exceptionally talented and outstanding music educator. My daughter Sophie, who is in the Wind Ensemble, has him as her band teacher. Ever since he began last fall, Sophie has found him very encouraging and inspiring. My husband and I also find him enthusiastic and dedicated. I'm a professional musician. I was educated at the Royal Academy of Music in London and then at Cambridge University in England. I've been a professional pianist, flautist, singer, conductor, composer, and music tutor for thirty years. I recognize an outstanding musician and music educator when I see one. Second, Mr. Loeb has been transformative for the RB Music Department. In the short time he's been here, he's made a big impact on the students and the staff. He's been especially ingenious in creating new ways of helping music students learn, grow, and feeling included despite the pandemic. For example, the virtual winter concert that he helped produce was an amazing testament to this. Mr. Loeb has been transformative for the RB Orchestra Program, as you heard. It seems strange and sad to me that the RB Music Department hasn't been able to keep a permanent orchestra teacher here, but has had to find a new one every year for the last five years. It's so unfair to the orchestra students and makes the music department weaker and less well-balanced. Mr. Loeb has really strengthened the orchestra this year. He's encouraged the orchestra students and is poised to build a very strong orchestra program going forward. To lose him now would be devastating for the RB Orchestra and for the future of the RB Music Department. As a professional musician, I've always been aware that music education can sometimes be undervalued. But I can tell you from experience that having students learn, practice, and perform music together is highly beneficial for psychological, mathematical, social, emotional, and physical development and self-discipline. All students, no matter what career they end up in, benefit from a strong music program. Practicing and performing music together has long been proven to develop essential skills for any workplace and for life in general. It develops team building, cooperation, compassion, sensitivity towards others, fine listening skills, creativity, emotional regulation, mathematical awareness, pattern recognition, the list goes on. Therefore, I beg you to reconsider Mr. Loeb's position.
Thank you.
He is a rare gem. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Fredis.
Good evening.
Dr. Skin, guests, members of the board. My name is Adam Bowen. I have a child who attends the school. I also coach the robotics team. But I'm here tonight to speak to you on a similar topic with regards to Mr. Loeb. It was made, brought to my attention that there was some consideration given to either cutting his position or cutting his position to fifty percent, which would potentially allow him to leave. I thought it would be useful not to really share my opinion on that, such as others have, but maybe to just introduce a couple of data points that you might consider when you're thinking about that decision. The first study that I'm going to reference is from the Journalist Psychology. It was done a couple of years ago. I'm happy to share the studies. It looked at the performance of about a hundred thousand students that participated in music and that found that they scored significantly better, statistically significantly better in math and science exams than their peers. The second data point from a different study, students who achieved higher scores in music achieved better scores on standardized tests in all subjects. My sense in learning this is that we don't need less of Mr. Loeb. We need more Mr. Lobes. As a, as a parent, I'm critically aware of the, the benefit. I saw the mission statements. I think every single one of them was related to academic performance. And so I would look at the, I would look at the connection between music and overall academic performance. One other, one other data point I, I felt was kind of interesting, this was from the same study, the, the academic who did the analysis. On average, children who played instruments for many years and then continued to play high school or orchestra were equivalent to about one academic year ahead of their peers with regards to English, math, and science skills. Again, I, I think the data is fairly conclusive. Strong participation in music leads to strong academic performance. So while we can have a conversation about the quality of Mr. Loeb, which I think is exceptional, I have a child who participates in that as well. If the mission of the organization, of our, our school, is to encourage strong academic performance, I think one of the critical ways that we do that is through strong music performance. The last thing I'll share, and I think it's an interesting anecdotal because I care about it from a robotics perspective. The robotics team, the music, the drama programs, we tend to work around the fringes, right, of, of school, right? Where we happen in the off-hours. And, and I think what's interesting about this, there was some information, there were, there were a couple academics that studied this. And they talked, I'll, I'll read the quote, right? "Before the school bell, right, we treat students as passive recipients of knowledge. His interest matters little." "After the bell, in athletics, debate, theater, and music, we treat students as people who learn by doing, people who teach as well as learn, and people whose passion and ideas are worth elevating." So again, I'd ask you to consider the, the choices that we're making here and the impact that a, that a vibrant academic contributor like Mr. Loeb could make, not only on the music department, but also on the academic performance of the school.
Thank you.
Good evening, guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing me an opportunity to speak. My name is Tahida Lester, and I have two children at RB. As a mom, I like to think that my children are pretty well-rounded. You met my daughter today, Madison, who is on Student Association. She is also a basketball player, a tennis player, but one of the things that she loves the most at RB is the music program. So I am also here to talk about that. This year, when people talk about a loss of education, I understand that I'm an educator myself. But one of the things that people talk about is that there's not as much connection with COVID and with virtual learning. My daughter has had the opposite experience this year with the music department. Three weeks ago, Mr. Baum surprised us and dropped by the house a bass clarinet for my daughter to learn. And she has received one-on-one lessons from Mr. Loeb for the past three weeks, learning the bass clarinet, improving on her skills. One of the things that would be nice for you to hear was that he's been encouraging her to play music in college. He's had those conversations with her. That's really important as an educator myself and as someone who has gone and gotten my master's and believes in education. He's been pushing her, talking about his experiences, things that he's done. I don't know if you guys have heard him play his instruments, but he plays multiple instruments and he plays them really well. He has encouraged her not only to play in school, but her and her friends have been playing outside of school, which is something that, as a parent, is really interesting to hear. The other day, her and a friend during their breaks in school were actually like playing their instruments and working on the performance pieces that he gave her. So that was really interesting. The fact that she has two teachers this year, and they're taking virtual and in-person and kind of balancing that, which is a hard thing to do, I'm really impressed with it, and I think they've done a really great job. They've given her a lot of personal attention. I also know that RB, when we looked at places to live, you guys have a huge amount of children that take AP classes. And one of the classes that might, you know, not have such a great chance of continuing is the AP Music Theory class, which is really important for kids that are musical. I know for me, when we looked at the state report card, I looked at how many children took AP classes at RB. That was really important to me as a, a parent. And so he has become an integral part of this music program, and I implore you to please try to keep him on for next year. We know strong schools have strong arts. They just do. And so please continue to support your music program at RB.
Thank you.
Of course.
Hello, my name's Carrie Felix, and I'm just a member of the community and a musician. Been a resident for twenty-six years, and like the other people that have spoken before me, I'm here to ask the board to reconsider reducing the size of the RB Music Department staff. Having a strong music program has so many benefits for the students. As others have pointed out, research shows that students who, who have been involved in high school music programs are more likely to graduate, less likely to abuse alcohol and drugs, do better on their SATs, and are more likely to attend and graduate from college. I can also tell you from my personal experience that performing music helps people to express emotions, deal with stress, and inspire others, which I think is important during this time. I can also say that we owe it to the students at RB High School, at RB High School, to provide a strong music department and all the benefits it can provide. So please take this into account and reconsider reducing the size of the music department.
Thank you.
All right, I'm with the board. Thanks for having me. My name is Anthony Perry. I'm a student at RB, and I play the cello. I'm actually one of Mr. Loeb's students. I'd also like to talk about why I think we should keep Mr. Loeb on as a teacher for RB Music. So I'd like to start with an anecdote about my personal life. I teach swimming lessons at the pool. It's called the Max Aquatics. So sometimes one of my coworkers will have something to do, so I have to take their lesson. I have to take over their kid for one lesson. And so when I take over this kid, this new kid I've never met before, I'm spending most of the lesson, like assessing him, trying to figure out how to work with the kid. And so by the end of the lesson, right, I haven't really done anything to benefit the kid. I've only assessed the kid. And then same thing, at a new session, I'll get a whole group of new kids. And it'll take me a good few weeks to actually get to know the kids, get to learn how to work with them, and get to learn what I can do to challenge them so I can teach them to be better swimmers. And I think this also applies to the, to the orchestra at RB, right? If we have a new teacher every year, that teacher spends the entire year trying to get to know each student. And he's not just getting to know one student like I am. He has to get to know multiple students in multiple bands and orchestras that he has to figure out how to work with. So by the end of the year, when he finally figures out, all right, this is the orchestra, this is how I teach them, this is how I challenge them, he just leaves. And then he doesn't actually get to implement all the challenges the ways he sees to make us better because he just leaves. And then we'll start the next year, the same thing, the new teacher will try and assess us and figure us out, but by the time they figure us out, it's over. And so that's why I think Mr. Loeb, if he gets another chance to go this year, all right, sorry, another chance to go next year, he's gonna implement more things to help make us better, right? And I think Mr. Loeb, more so than other teachers, actually really cares about our students getting to know us. Like even though I've been remote, I feel closer to Mr. Loeb than I have to any other of my teachers, and I've only seen him twice a week for like half the school year, right? So that's why I think it's really important we keep him on.
Thank you. Nice job.
Hi, my name is David Renssen. I am a PhD mathematician, and I am also a musician who benefited greatly from attending a high school of similar size to RB, which had a music program that positively dwarfs what we have at RB at this time in terms of student enrollment percentage and staff. I'm here speaking on behalf of the students, I guess, as parents, in support of maintaining a full-time status for Mr. Matthew Loeb's position in the music department. So let's start with reality. I'm gonna make a bad analogy. If you wanted to hire someone to clean your home once a week, and then every time you went on vacation for three weeks, two weeks, or whatever, you decided to fire them and start all over, is that actually good practice? Is that something that you would practically do all the time? I mean, generally in my case, not that I, I would, I'd like to have someone that I could trust to come back to continually and not have to restart the equation. Similarly, in business, we don't hire for a full-time position and then spend six months training them, knowing full well that it's highly likely that we'll just let them go after a year has gone by. It doesn't make sense. It costs money to hire people. It costs money to train talent. It takes time to build relationships with students. And it's even more expensive to hire someone after the fact who isn't a good fit. And it's all too easy to derail these investments in people, in teachers, in students by having a short-sighted outlook. Or by not understanding all of the costs involved in a decision. Or by not taking them into account. We either value these investments or we do not. I, I'd also like to say I very much appreciate it and fully support the statement that was made referring to the research and such. I think that's very important to understand. We value this. I think we should all value this. And I feel in summary that the proposed cut in music staff that is put forward, that I understand, is simply put penny-wise and pound-fullish. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Letitia Lefal. I am a parent of two 10th graders that are very involved in the arts, Clue and right now the musical that we're very excited for, and also the music program. Also a co-president of music sponsors. I am going to read a letter on behalf of Julie and Michael Laubie, because she was unable to be here tonight. Dear District Board, My husband and I are the parents of Matthew Laubie, a junior who attends RB, RB's hybrid model and is an RB athlete. Matthew has been part of a string orchestra since freshman year. He began playing at Blythe Park and continued for three years at Hauser while enjoying playing as an eighth grader with the RB Orchestra. Matthew plans on continuing in orchestra his senior year and using what he has been taught to continue playing outside of school. We also have a seventh grader at Hauser who looks forward to playing in the orchestra during his four years at RB. We are invested in the RBHS Music Department and its orchestra for the next five and a half years. I am writing to you on behalf of Riverside Brookfield's newest orchestra teacher, Mr. Matthew Loeb, who was hired this past August. Mr. Loeb had little time to prepare for classes while also preparing to instruct both hybrid and remote students. It is an understatement to say Mr. Loeb stepped up to the challenge and tasks set before him. He rose to and far exceeded the challenge and tasks set before him, taking the bull by its horns, and has been a great asset to RB's Music Department. Mr. Matthew, Mr. Loeb is Matthew's third orchestra teacher in three years. Mr. Loeb has continually engaged Matthew and his fellow orchestra students and has taught them new skills and techniques, which has also led them to being outstanding musicians. Matthew and his friends have spoken highly of Mr. Loeb and have enjoyed this year's orchestra immensely with the amount of enthusiasm and love for music that he has demonstrated each and every day to students both hybrid and remote. He is very engaging and a professional at parent-teacher conferences in October and has been nothing but a positive asset and a shining light to RB's orchestra students as he is easy to communicate and work with. Mr. Loeb has continually motivated students to learn and excel at music. He has already made a favorable and lasting impression on RB Music students, parents, and staff. and staff far exceeding what anyone would expect a new but experienced teacher to do. Mr. Loeb has shown his dedication, commitment, and love for RB Music and Bulldog Community by working endlessly to only make it better and to bring stability to the orchestra program. The winter concert, although done virtually this year, is a favorite event of families in Riverside, North Riverside, Brookfield, and surrounding communities and is enjoyed by both young and old alike. Mr. Loeb stepped up to the plate to help produce this beautiful concert, which is still being talked about, as it has truly brightened many lives. I urge the Board of Education to develop a long-term plan in lieu of a year-to-year. Mr. Loeb has exceeded the expectations of students, parents, and the community with his experience and true appreciation for music. The District 208 Board of Education should offer Mr. Loeb a permanent position in the RB Music Department and let him work at rebuilding and strengthening the RB Orchestra Program and the RB Music Department. I strongly urge the Board of Education to invest in Mr. Loeb in the future. Oh, it's, she said it twice, sorry. Thank you for your consideration. Respectfully, Julie and Michael Laubie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lisa Spassionis. I'm just a continuation of this effort. I'm one of the presidents of the Parent Music Group here at RB, and I have a sophomore who's in the music program and loving every minute of it, has Mr. Loeb. I just want to say generally that we are concerned about numbers going down, enrollment numbers going down in the music program, but we feel like it's such an unfair year to base it off of because all of the fun that comes with music has been mostly eliminated this year. So I feel like kids are kind of using that as a basis to make their decision for next year. And it just, it seems skewed because we're limited to the pandemic, and I just, it doesn't seem right. But we're very proud of the music program we have here, and we'd like to keep it going. So this is a letter from Matthew Laubie, who couldn't be here tonight. My name is Matthew Laubie, and I am a junior in the string orchestra and have been since freshman year. I also attend RB's hybrid model, and I'm on the RB cross-country and lacrosse team. Mr. Loeb is my third orchestra teacher in three years and has made orchestra fun while also imparting new skills and knowledge to us, whether it has been through Zoom or hybrid. Mr. Loeb has continually engaged my class, even when most of the students are learning remotely, as I am one of two who attends the hybrid model. I always look forward to orchestra and seeing Mr. Loeb. He always exhibited, he always exhibits enthusiasm and love for music this year while sharing his immense talent with his classes. Mr. Loeb has always been available to assist us during class and office hours. Mr. Loeb has continually motivated all of the music students this year and continuously gives the skills we need to learn so that we may excel and make ourselves better in all aspects of our schooling. It has only been all uphill with Mr. Loeb and an enjoyable year. I am gaining new skills I need to play outside of school as I volunteer to play violin at my church. I ask the Board of Education to offer Mr. Loeb a permanent position in the RB Music Department and let him work with me as a senior and then with my younger brother, who plays the viola, viola, in the seventh grade orchestra and chamber orchestra at Hauser. He'll continue to have a positive impact on my fellow students and me in the time we have at RB. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
I know I'm not on the list, but Mr. Mannan.
Oh, yes, of course. I'm going to get a chance to speak. You just use the list to like make it more orderly, but yes, of course.
We'll put our hand up when you have 30 seconds left, okay?
Hello. My name is Claire Harrison, and I am a junior. I spoke a couple months ago about why I have chosen to remain remote throughout the whole school year, but I'm here for a different reason tonight. As some of you may have remembered, I am heavily involved in the fine arts, especially band. Unsurprisingly, I was outraged when I heard about the recent developments involving one of my band teachers. Since the first minute I met Mr. Loeb, I knew he was exactly what the music department needed. He's a positive, talented, and kind leader who helps us not only to grow as musicians, but as human beings. I think a lot of us can use more positive and kind people in our lives right now. I spent a lot of time in the fine arts, whether that be painting, stage managing, or playing in the band. Because of this, I know the profound impact a good fine arts teacher can have on one's life. Please know that I was not sent by anyone tonight and that I truly stand by everything I have said. Please do not take away opportunities from fine, take away opportunities from fine arts students. I know that I speak for many of my classmates when I say that the fine arts are more than just a class for us. These teachers are more than just people who teach us scales and the right notes. These are incredibly influential figures in our lives. Know that the decisions the administration and the board make do not go unnoticed by us. Please think of more than logistics and money when it comes to making this decision. Think of the joy we get from music. Think of those of us who only made it through these hard times because of people like Mr. Loeb. When you make this decision, think of us. Thank you, and I yield my time.
Good job. Thank you.
Good job, Claire.
Dr. Freitas, anybody have any other participants? Okay. I wouldn't want to move on without everybody getting a chance. Okay, we'll do additional discussion items. At this point in the meeting, Board of Education members may request to add an additional discussion item. All right. Okay, we'll go to the reports. President's report, I do not have one. Student advisor report.
Anything from student advisors?
Yeah, so I don't know. I just wanted to mention this from last week when we were talking about the yearbook, that I think the decision should be left up to the yearbook and Rousher, which I think is, I think, what we've mostly decided on for Justin's. In regards to the survey, I spoke to Mr. Mannan today, and like they said, it's been like 47%. I also saw that there were, like, we had time to do it second period, so everyone had the chance to do it. So if they didn't do it, I mean, every teacher in second period gave us the chance to, from what I know. And there's also been maybe a couple misconceptions with the wording because some people told me they thought they didn't have to do it if they were in person or remote, and I didn't understand where that was coming from, but there could be a misconception there. But yeah, I think everything in school has been going well. Like Dr. Freitas said, it could be just the weather that there's a little bit less students here, but from being in school versus home, I'm much more productive, obviously. It's really easy to go to bed during class and then, I don't know, but compared to when I'm at school, I have to get work done, and it's just a much more motivating environment.
Yeah, I didn't know the survey was sent out during second period. I'm pretty sure my second period class did not do that. So if you guys are trying to get the survey out to more students, I would just, you know, really try to enforce that teachers, you know, inform their students about the survey and where they can fill it out. But I agree with everything Michael said, and I do think that the weather plays a big part in the lower numbers of students coming in because I go on Tuesdays and Thursdays, and last Thursday it was snowing in the morning, so I decided to stay home. But, you know, it's getting pretty nice out, you know. It was really hot today and yesterday compared to last week.
38, it was really hot.
So hopefully things will start to turn around, and yeah.
Yeah, I feel like the calendar's on our side, right? Like it's, drugs coming. Anything else?
That's all I had. I mean, no, maybe for the student advisor, but that's later on, I will have to say for that, so.
Okay. When we get to that, Michael, maybe talk with Dr. Freitas in your meeting before the board meeting, so you guys have a couple points you want to share for that.
Okay.
And then, yeah, just think about the mission statement for next time, right? Some wordsmithing, pull out the source or something, right?
Superintendent's report.
Curriculum Advisory Council won't meet until the spring to review class offerings for next year, also to discuss foreign language. Facilities Advisory Council will have the first read tonight on the life safety handrails. Finance Advisory Council met prior to this meeting. You'll get the financial projections for the next three to four years. This evening, you'll see some of the, some of the deficits that have been discussed at previous meetings will be explained in a little more detail by Ms. Matana. Personnel Advisory Council, Ramona and Mr. Durkin will receive a copy of the staffing report of any classes that are under 20, and that information before next meeting, I'll send that out to them, and we'll do a quick Zoom on that, but that is not scheduled yet. And then there's no update from policy, and there's no update on purchase or lease of land. An additional communication was sent to the zoo to see if we can get feedback on the drawing that we met on in October, and we have not received any feedback at this time, so we're continuing to pursue that. That concludes my superintendent's report.
All right. The Assistant Superintendent's report.
The reports tonight will provide the Board of Education with financial information for the month of January, which represents 58% of the fiscal year. The first report is on Board Book page, if you could go to Board Book page 25, Mary Ann, please. The total, the monthly summary report has the total operating revenue for the month, which was $907,641, with 63% coming from federal and state reimbursements, 20% coming from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and then 11% coming from property tax and CPPRT, primarily that corporate personal replacement tax. The total operating expenditure for the month was $2,695,88, with 72% towards salary and benefits, 11% for special education tuition, and 9% for operations and maintenance, and that was primarily to pay our liability insurance premiums. The next reports are the monthly financial statements. The fund balances summary shows that the district is deficit spending in its operating funds of $2,251,753. This will continue for the month of February as well until the district receives more property tax, which will get a large payment in March. And then this year with COVID, we anticipate not getting all of that and some of that trickling in. The summary of revenues for the district shows that the district has received 51% of our budgeted revenue for the year. So similar to this time last year, we were at 49%, but we were very conservative in our revenue budget this year. And then the summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 56% of the budgeted expenditures for this year, and this amount is down from this time last fiscal year, which was at 60%. Also, for the board's information, like I do every month, I've included the Statement of Revenue and Expenditures report along with the Student Activity Account summary for the month of January. My next report begins on Board Book page 49, and this is the financial projections for fiscal year '22 through '25, as Dr. Skink has referenced. Annually, I provide the board with financial projections for the next four years. In order to make these financial projections, we need to enter information or assumptions into the software. Some of these assumptions have changed a little bit from previous years due to COVID. So I'd like to take a minute just to highlight some of the bigger ones. I'm not going to read all of them for you. But the first one on the revenue side is the property tax collection. For next fiscal year, fiscal year '22, we have it remaining at 97% of collection. Typically, we budget 99% for property tax collection. And then in fiscal year '23, we moved that up to 98% and then back to 99% for the last two years. Corporate property taxes were decreased from $375,000 to $350,000 to reflect not only a more accurate three-year average, but also the impact due to COVID. We know the Consumer Price Index that we'll use on our upcoming levy in December, and that has dropped significantly from 2.3 this past levy to 1.4%. And then moving forward for the assumptions, we have that set at 2% for CPI. And then evidence-based funding, we have held flat. You know, Governor Pritzker has said in his proposed budget that he's committed to maintaining that evidence-based funding. We'll see if that holds out in actual budget, but that's why we have left that flat for our assumptions. On the expenditure side, staff.
Kristen, real quick.
Yep.
With the revenue, property tax collection, so like under the Consumer Price Index, you put every 1% is approximately $210,000. So with the revenue, with the property tax collection, every 1% is roughly?
210 to 220,000.
Okay.
On the expenditure side, staff salaries increase for next year, returning certified staff salaries increase at 3.87%. Please note that doesn't factor into the retirement savings, which are noted later, as well as any staffing changes, which we call FTE, either reductions to that, those are also factored in later. And then our contract, our CBA is up after fiscal year '22, and so we've put a placeholder in moving forward at 3%. Administrative contracts, we have an assumption at increasing at 2% for next year and then 2.5% for future years as a placeholder. Non-certified staff, we typically make an assumption at 3%. Staff hiring projections are based off of enrollment projections. So fiscal year '22, next year, we have a decrease of 1.3 FTE. Fiscal year '23, no change. And then '24 and '25, each year would decrease by 0.6 due to a decrease in enrollment. And then the retirement savings is the other big one that I'd like to touch on, and that significantly varies from year to year based off of the number of staff members that we have retiring. So you can see one year, zero in terms of savings, and another year, it's $273,000. So moving on to the next page, the actual projections.
I have a quick question. Is there a way that you can, 3.87 is a staffing increase, can you run that to also incorporate the retirement? I know it's not fluid for multi-years, but I think it'd be helpful to know what the actual staffing increase percentage is for next year.
Yes, sure, I can do that separately.
Wait, say that again?
Instead of just showing 3.87% for FY '22 and then have footnoting that no retirement savings, what's the actual percentage? I think you think it'd be a little bit more transparent.
Yeah, that's not, that's not a number I can pull from the program, but I can calculate that and share that out with the board.
Thank you.
So looking at the actual assumptions, I know it's probably incredibly hard to read if you're just looking at the screen.
Mary Ann, can you blow that up to like 200%?
And if you scroll down, I'm going to start in the, I'm going to start in the budget, the black column all the way onto the left. So this is where our current budget is at, and you can see the deficit, the projected deficit for this year has decreased a little bit from what I presented in the initial budget. I haven't changed the budget, but I have decreased that number by $150,000 because at the start of the school year, we had two retirements that were unexpected, and so we had some savings there. And the way this program works is the staffing numbers are then used to make the following projections, or the projections for next year. So it was important that I corrected that before moving forward. So that's why you can see that adjustment there. Next, if you look at the row going across, so everything highlighted in yellow, those are the projected deficits for each year. So you can see that first number for fiscal year '22, next year, the projected deficit is $998,702. Fiscal year '23 is $597,572. Can see the next year, fiscal year '24, is a little bit over a million-dollar deficit, and then the following year is a deficit of $200,000 roughly. And so one thing that I'd like to note is that these projections have increased from what I had presented last year. And I'm sure, you know, last year is a little bit of a blur, but if you remember, I presented these projections last year a week before we went on quarantine. And so we really had no idea how COVID would impact us financially at that point, or if at all. And so the red box on the very bottom, if you could scroll down, Mary Ann, includes what the projections were at this time last year for the upcoming fiscal years, and then why they are significantly different. And, you know, the main difference is that we are losing revenue in many areas. Decreased revenue for property tax collection, interest on investment, food service commission, building rentals, and local fees, and then increased expenditures in regards to both operations and maintenance for PPE and cleaning supplies, as well as an increase in special education tuition. And then the last thing I'd like to highlight is right above that red box is, are the blue numbers. And so there are two sets of fund balances. The black numbers that are above the blue numbers are fund balances that include the $2.9 million that we have reserved in working cash. And so it's really important to take a look at the blue numbers. And so it's really important to take a look at the blue numbers instead because that backs out that $2.9 million that's reserved for the field project or land acquisition. And so looking at that, it's concerning that, you know, if you look the first year and fiscal year, after fiscal year '22, we would be at a fund balance of 39.21%. And if you look all the way to the right, you're at, you know, a 30% fund balance. And that means that the district can operate for 3.68 months without receiving any additional revenue. And if you remember to my presentation earlier, how we're, how we've been deficit spending for a few months because we're waiting for more property tax to come in, that's why it's incredibly important that we have that fund balance so that we can operate in the months that we need to deficit spend in order for that money to come back in. So we will certainly need to keep an eye on this. You know, we update projections every year, and things will certainly change with COVID, but it's important to keep an eye on that fund balance. I have other items in my report, but I want to pause and answer any questions that you may have in regards to the financial projections.
I don't, I have some comments, I think, right? Sort of back to, I guess I was going to bring up too what you just said, right? Like we go back to the pie graphs, right? Like basically, our expenditures were double our revenue this month, right? About $900,000 and about, right? So when does that next big chunk of money come from the state?
It won't be from the state. The next big chunk of money will come from property tax in March.
Okay. So March, okay.
Although I think it's actually, has a delayed collection.
How they did a delayed collection, right? So like what people don't understand is that we are heavily dependent on property tax collection, so the fact that we're going to 97 instead of 99 is roughly a half a million dollars right there. So if you look at Kristin's projection just for FY '21 in that red box, we were supposed to finish this year around 574. The board has made a conscious effort to try to do these as close to real as possible because in the past, we've always, you know, done conservative projections like worst-case scenario, which is kind of what you're supposed to do, so you're preparing for the worst. But I mean, you know, there were some years where we would project a million-dollar deficit, and we'd come in with a surplus of $300,000, right? That's a $1.3 million swing in layman's terms. So I think the important thing to highlight is, you know, that delay in property tax collection and the impact of COVID is not only going to impact us just this year, it will impact us in future year because you receive your tax dollars in the rear.
Right.
And so you can see like just that half a million dollars in property tax collection, that's not even counting like the, the lost commission from rentals, the lost commission from student fees, the lost commission from cafeteria not being open, you know, so those, there's a lot of impact that we have to plan for, for probably the next two years until we're fully out of the impact of COVID. You know, so, and that, that drives a lot of our decision-making. If you look at next year, the deficit was supposed to be around 273 because we had a lot of retirees coming off the books, and it was, that was supposed to be kind of like our swing year, and now it's closer to $1 million. And so it's important that, you know, I know we had talked, had many discussions in the last few years about fund balance and people's philosophy on fund balance, but I think you're starting to see like, when county comes out and says, hey, we're going to delay, you have an extra two months to pay your property taxes. Well, we basically then take out of the bank or this fund balance, an extra two months of bills that have to be paid, and payroll, and lights, and gas, and, and so, yes, that will, will that money get replaced? It should, if we get the property tax collection we're expecting, but if somebody takes three months or four months to pay their property taxes, we don't, we don't get a chance to recoup that. The county doesn't give us that money as a front and take it back, so.
We also know the state is not fully funding at the formula that they promised us, for one, that we also are, what I'm hearing is EBF is dead in the water, right? That it's-
I haven't heard that. I think our bigger, we budgeted flat for EBF.
Correct.
Like that's not a game changer for us.
No, it's not for us.
But the game changer for us is if two or three points, if we come in two or three points lower on property tax collection, that's anywhere from a half a million to $750,000. Now, you already were expecting CPI is down, okay, that's new money, so you're, you're not getting, in the past few years, it's been over 2%, so you're getting 1.4, which is, you know, it's an impact of about 190 to, you know, 210,000 like Kristin said. But it's the property tax collection that we are heavily, we're 90% reliant on, and-
And in the fall, we were at about 95% of our property tax collection, which obviously is significantly lower than the 99% that we usually budget.
Sure. I would also like these, this assumption of back up to 98 and 99, I mean, if we historically look at what happened after 2008, this school district didn't feel that till 2011. So really, I'm, I'm worried for three years down the road what that means for not only RB, but all the schools in the state. I mean, you know.
Yes, certainly, certainly now with COVID, it's hard to make a very accurate projection, you know, four years out, so we will revise those as we go.
Sure, sure.
Because, yes, we could be experiencing the impact of COVID much more than two fiscal years.
You know, these, the fact that CPI is going down, you know, I think, you know, I mean, I've talked about this before at the board meeting, like EBF, right? Like they put, there are three buckets of money that they, where state could put their money, right? Free K, K-12, higher ed. And they've basically abandoned the other two systems just to put all their money here. I don't think it's just, in my opinion, I don't think it's sustainable. So like when you look at those first three indicators for revenue in the future, in this state, it doesn't look very good. It does not look very good at all. Like I, I'm, I'm very concerned about our financial picture for the future. And I think we've done a great job of balancing and maintaining the level of service in, in this district, but, I don't know, just, it's my opinion.
I agree with that. 10 years ago, you know, we're on the board.
Right.
We had that recession, we had just many, many foreclosures in the neighborhood.
Sure.
Many. And that's probably when we had some of the, you know, the biggest deficits. And that's when, you remember, we cut, just when Kevin was coming on.
I remember being in this room, speaking to that board about those cuts.
Everything. We cut all, the, you know, the musical, the, we had to cut everything just to save the academic programs. And like, like you're saying, I'm seeing unemployment numbers still increasing. I'm seeing, you know, colleagues are not returning to work. We're in a reassessment tax year. I know my taxes are at the attorney's office, you know, it's with everyone else fighting for that. I think we need to buckle down. I think, you know, as a board, we probably want to start to say, is there anything we don't have to spend money on, need to save? Because I think the storm is still coming.
I, I would agree.
Isn't there a moratorium right now on foreclosures anyway?
So we wouldn't even feel that?
No, no, there's not.
Yeah, but they still don't have to pay their property tax, which we wouldn't get.
So, Kristin, the state recommends 33% fund balance, correct?
Correct.
So if this is true, and we continue on course, by 2024, we'll be, we'll have used up our savings that we've taken 10 years to build.
Well, it doesn't deplete the fund balance.
Doesn't deplete it, it would just be more, it would be lower threshold.
Right at the cusp.
But no, but it's, but I want to be clear, we're not going to be out of money in four years.
No, we have to be out of money.
Just below the recommendation.
We need to keep that 33% because we got tariff bills, right?
And there's more policy about the recommendation of what it should, it should be. I mean, absolutely, I don't disagree, I just think it's important to not, and I, I want to be a little bit Pollyanna-ish about evidence-based funding because of the, the governor's address this week talked about using federal CARES money to actually get to the EBF numbers for this year, so I think-
Oh, I missed that, sorry.
So I think that some of the, the concerns about EBF, I think you're spot on, but it may not be in this fiscal year, maybe in the future fiscal years.
Sure.
I mean, it's, it's an area of alarm. I just think everyone is trying to balance and respond to COVID, perhaps it won't be as low.
We also have to think about, EBF to us-
Yeah, we don't get it.
Is $75,000.
Yeah.
That's not like some of our neighboring districts that get $2 million, million every year. That's not us. We're like 75, 80,000, you know, we'll get-
It's not saving the day.
We'll get some bump, but it won't be the same as like loss, for every loss of percentage of property tax.
Property tax, yeah. Yeah, so they think the percentage, what are we, 93% property tax? 93% of our budget comes from property tax?
I don't have the, I can pull it up, it's in our budget, I don't have that number.
It's within the 90% range.
Yeah, so unlike all the money that, in the state of Illinois, that's reserved for
Illinois, Chicago, that district takes about 75% of it. The collar suburbs in southern Illinois, we split the remaining 25%. If 93% of our budget, $22 million, is coming from property tax, and people's income and people's jobs are on the line paying this tax.
It's about 80% that comes from property tax, and then 7% is other local revenue. 11% is state and 3% is federal.
Okay.
So that 7% is like the rental commission, the cafeteria commission, some student fees.
Registration fees.
Pay to participate, those kinds of things.
Yes, exactly.
Well, you know, the idea of projections is to prepare the board and the community so they understand what goes into some of the decision-making. And I know we dealt with a little bit of that tonight, you know, we had parents concerned. We've tried to in the, in the past, coming off of one recession back in 2008, when I, when I put some of this stuff in place in 2011 with the board, was just to try, tie some of our largest expenditures directly to student requests and, and enrollment and those types of things so that, you know, we can try to manage within this range. The one thing I want to be prepared, so Kristin, like, you know, in three or four years, none of us have a crystal ball. So the biggest thing is, how close are we going to, I mean, right now with this 1.4 at this fiscal year, how, what are you, what are your, what's your best? And I know you're not a fortune teller, you're not, whether we get a huge payment from the-
But boy, that would be cool.
From the county or whatever, like where you think we're going to be finishing at, if you had a guess today, will it be 1.4 million dollar deficit? Will it be closer? I mean, we haven't used all of our transportation for some sports, right? We had some staff, you already lowered it to account for some staff that retired or left and we didn't replace.
Correct. That's, I appreciate you putting me on the spot. It's an incredibly difficult answer right now because what's really going to drive that is our property tax collection in March.
Okay.
And how much we get initially. We have been saving some money on expenditures, but I do think we will come in somewhere around $1 million in terms of our deficit.
Because we're chasing, from the fall collection, an additional two points, correct? We were at about 95 property tax collection, and we budgeted for 97 for that period.
Correct. I certainly though, after, you know, after the month of March, I will have a much more accurate answer, but if you ask me right now for, you know, kind of just where I see this coming in at, I do think we'll be around a million dollar deficit this year.
I was hoping you'd say like 500,000?
Well, it all, it really, I mean, I, it really depends on that March property tax collection. I was not anticipating the fall being at 94 to 95%. We've gotten a little bit of that trickling in since, since the fall, but, I mean, it's really going to be driven by how much we collect in March, as well as where some of those expenditures are going to hit in June for athletics, because we've never had a June athletic season, and I think some of those expenditures are going to be pushed into next fiscal year. And so there, there's also a timing issue for some of that. But like I said, after, if you ask me again at the end of March, I'll be able to give you a much more accurate picture.
But this is kind of my point, it's like, it's so, it's so unpredictable.
Right. So could that, could that, your deficit projection for FY '22 is $900,000 roughly, almost a million dollars?
Correct.
But those expenses that will help lower the deficit for '21-
Could then impact that.
For the summer sports could actually drive up the deficit for '22 because that money that we have allocated to pay for the sports this year, and we're not going to receive those transportation bills and official bills until July 1, which will impact it's a different fiscal year.
Correct.
And we're also going to-
And then if we assume sports get back on track.
Right, if sports are back, so what I'm saying is, you're going to be paying for sports at summer of '21, this fiscal year, or this June, and have to be ready to start paying summer, fall sports again in August, so we're going to have some-
Correct.
Almost like doubling up.
A little more hard to try to get all of those June expenditures as much as we can in, in this fiscal year, but to your point, there is going to be, especially due to COVID, there's, I, there, there could be a lot of things that change between now and then that could drive up that, that deficit projection for next year. Or, you know, there could be some miracle and it could, it could be significantly lowered. We could have, we could have some staffing changes, maybe more people decide to retire, but overall, I, I feel that, you know, it will likely stay around that number. I think, you know, things usually tend to wash themselves out. You might have some savings if a staff member decides to retire, but then you might have the athletic expenditures. So certainly that number is not set in stone. That will, you know, vary as we go through the budget process.
And it's just that, it's a projection. So the board should be aware, the community that's watching should be aware, it is just that, it's a projection. It can fluctuate up, it can fluctuate down.
So that's a million dollar difference than we've had. Every year, we've come in a little bit above, we're now definitely looking to come in under, and we are looking to come in closely to $1 million behind what we have in the past 10 years.
Yes.
Yes.
It's a million dollar difference.
The alarming thing is, is if you, when you, when you, every 200,000 roughly, like Kristin said, to keep math easy, is, is roughly a point off your fund balance. So you go from 43 to 39 pretty quick. You go from 39 to 36, 35, really, within two years, you know, and so.
That's a huge change in one year for us, for our district, we're a small district.
Yeah, we have a smaller budget on the smaller side, right.
Right.
The COVID effect.
And Deanna and Wes are on the finance community, both have a strong finance background. I mean, I think they're, I think I'm covering all the stuff we, we discussed, right? Is there any other, I mean?
No, I think it's right, it's the right doom and gloom, though. I mean, I think it was a very good report, and I think our colleagues here have quickly identified this is not a problem that's going away with a resolution that's around the corner next week. We have to kind of think through ramifications.
Right. I know there was a question submitted.
Oh, I'm not done with my report, I have other.
He has more, we were just stopping to talk about this.
Okay, keep going.
We're ready to move on.
Sure.
The next item is on Board Book Page 51. I've provided for the board, kind of ties into the financial projections, but this is a calendar for how the budget is built for fiscal year '22. Nothing has changed in regards to the timeline, but I wanted to provide this to you so the board had a reminder of the overall budget process, and when you'll be seeing information, like last fiscal year, you know, we'll continue to refine the budget as we get closer and closer to that final budget in September. So the board will see the budget multiple times, and we really start to dive into that process beginning in March next month. Then the last item in this report, I wanted to give the board a heads up that in March or April, the board will see a large bill for $136,540 to purchase Chromebooks for next year. The district has chosen to purchase these Chromebooks now to ensure that we have them at the start of next year. We're a little nervous because due to COVID, there's a shortage not only on Chromebooks, but on processing chips, and so we want to make sure that they're ready to go. I bring that to the board's attention because this is not a budgeted expense in this budget. We usually would wait till next fiscal year. And this cost includes not only the Chromebooks, but the Google management, which is required for each Chromebook. CARES Act money will be used to offset this purchase, and CARES Act, so there was a question submitted about this. So our initial CARES Act funding is $116,303. We, we've already been reimbursed for the lunch costs from the spring, which was roughly around $26,000, and we'll use the remaining money of the initial funding to purchase these Chromebooks, and with the new funding, we'll pay for the rest of these Chromebooks. In addition, once we receive the new money, we will also, we also plan to use a large portion of it to get reimbursed for our costs of our ARAMAR, which is our buildings and grounds, as well as some additional technology purchases. This is important to note that it's a reimbursement grant, so the best approach- This is important to note that it's a reimbursement grant, so the best approach is really just to try to get that money in the district's hands right away by utilizing things that are easy to get approved in the grant, but also that are items that, you know, we know will get pushed through, and that are purchases that we have already made. So the new money, like I said, the application process is not out yet, so we haven't been able to access that new CARES Act money because there is a second round, but once that comes available, we will apply for that and get that. We also still need to work through with our auditor in terms of using the grant for ARAMAR, because the, the grant money comes in on the educational account, but the expenditure is on the operations and maintenance accounts. We just need to work through that issue with our auditor as well. But I'll provide a comprehensive report on how all the CARES Act money was spent on that COVID tracking document when I report out again on that towards the end of the year.
Is there a good chance that that CARES money, even if we're trying to reimburse for something we paid for this year to open school and clean school and do those things, we might not get that till after July 1?
It is possible, that's why I would recommend that we use it for ARAMAR purchase, because as soon as that grant comes available, I can apply, and then I can immediately apply for the reimbursement. So there's a stronger likelihood that we would then capture that money this fiscal year. If we, if we tried to identify something that we would want next fiscal year, then we would, we would have to wait to get reimbursed for that.
So that technically by reimbursing us for the ARAMAR expenses used to open school and the extra cleaning and PPE and all that stuff, that technically could, if we get reimbursed this fiscal year, could help offset some of that lost revenue from tax collection?
Correct, because at the end of the day, it's, it all comes into the one, you know, the same pot of money. It all comes into the district.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do you want to ask the board?
No, but thank you for putting the, the budget calendar back in there. I appreciate that.
There's no, is that it for your report?
That concludes my report, yes.
Okay.
All righty. Principal's report, did we already do that?
Hector, I know you have a few other points you want to touch on, but Mr. Mannan's been sitting there for a while. Should we let him do the handbook so he can get back tomorrow morning?
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Mannan. Mr. Mannan is the Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, and he's here to address the handbook, which Ms. Sierra volunteered to be on as the board's advisory person for Mr. Mannan.
Thank you, good evening, board. This is the first read. Last year, we, we had two reads established that, I think that went well to have a healthy discussion with the board on current topics and changes for the next school year. So due to COVID for this year, our annual report will look a little bit different in regards to our expectations. The major changes that we typically include are condensed due to, we just don't know where ISB is going to be at with the learning requirements for next year. So in regards to like final exam exemptions and language like that that we typically look at, we more, we had time, I guess, more to address a couple of things. So I'm going to outline one dress code and updated language that we'd like to recommend, and then just some formatting things that we're going to do to increase student accessibility and the easiness to read and access our handbook. So in preparation for this report, I solicited feedback from parents, students, faculty and staff, as well as the administration. This year I also worked with our Student Leadership Forum that met three times, and just to solicit their feedback in regards to areas that they would like to modify or enhance in our handbook. Before we begin with the report, I would just like to point out that these recommendations will create what we believe is an equitable handbook procedure that is inclusive to all students. Updating our current dress code language will decrease the learning loss due to hat and hood enforcement, limit unnecessary power struggles and microaggressions with staff, and provide opportunities for student individuality. Our goal next year is to welcome students that either have been in a hybrid situation and, or in a remote setting, in-person or remote setting. We want to welcome all back, and we know that there's going to be struggles with students that have been learning in a remote setting coming back. And so the last thing we want to do, as soon as they walk in our door, say, hey, take your hood and your hat off. We really want to make this an environment that's inclusive and enhancing their individuality. And I think the language that we recommend today will do that. It'll also provide confidence within our students in eliminating our gender and cultural biases, and that goes along with the equity work that we've been doing this year. Okay, so at this time, we're going to look at the report that we sent in the board packet. So the recommendation with the dress code is to eliminate the itemized procedures that we've had, and just align our, the handbook procedure with the board policy, which is 7:160. That procedure basically states that a student's appearance, including their dress grooming, must not disrupt the educational process, interfere with maintaining a positive teaching and learning climate, or compromise reasonable standards of health, safety, and the decency as directed by the administration. Any clothing that's deemed inappropriate or goes against that board policy, those students will be required to change. And then the recommendations that we're looking to, for the board to look at are having students wear a hat, authorizing that, and hats facing straight forward or straight backwards, and hats must be visible to staff and not interfere with the sightline of any staff or students. Students may continue to wear it for religious reasons. Headwear not limited to headscarves or bandanas, hoodies, sweatshirts. The wearing of the hood is allowed, but the face must be visible. Obviously footwear would be required at all times. And then wearing the hat or hood in the classroom or instructional environment will be at the sole discretion of the classroom teacher. Questions on that before we go to the second item? The second item that we're going to address is just proposing to add a building director on the front page with associated QR codes and building contacts that were never included in our handbook before. We just think that, and this was a recommendation from our Student Leadership Forum, just to have like a top 10 list, and then we sorted through a conversation of what those top 10 things were with our students and then also with our deans, and so we came up with that list that we included here in the board packet. We just think that if we can have a top 10 list with associated links, that'll just be on the front page or, you know, inside our front page of our handbook, kids could just hit that with the camera, go right to that link, and then see what they are looking for, instead of kind of sit through everything in the handbook. We do have in a fiscal handbook that we provide all of our students during our residency events also as a planner. As we're in the remote, you know, we've started in the remote setting, now we're bringing students back and have, you know, been, been on that train for a while. We need, I think, eventually look at maybe an online handbook, but at this point, when students come back, we want this next school year to be as normal as possible, given whatever mitigations are in place, and thus we want the handbook to reflect that and also provide some opportunities for individuality for our students.
Dave, I did not receive any questions from the board, so unless there's something that came up during Dave's presentation or that you read on the packet, I think, you did have one question.
I have a question about mask wearing, and I guess how you would, how you would consider or address or think about mask wearing as a safety element or otherwise?
Yeah, that was a good question, and something that we originally thought of. I think we need to get this into the editor by next, by I think March, in the middle of March, so we can get it printed and ready by residency. So I think what would be easiest would be provide like a little box that would just outline our PPE expectations for students for next year. Hopefully we have some more information from the state and some guidance on that as to what next year will look like. It's either that or we could do a sticker that we can add later on, so we're currently looking at those two options, but either way, there will be something on our front page that'll outline our expectations for next year with the PPE.
I mean, I think it's generally covered because you mentioned safety, just not explicitly called out, which is why I asked.
Yeah, that was a great point, thank you.
Dave, if we just altered a verbiage minimally to say, in the event we are still dealing with the impact of COVID-19, social distancing masks may be required.
Yep.
Right? I mean, there's something general you could put in the front page.
Yep, that's easy.
Good. Any questions? All right. Thank you.
Good job, Dave. Sorry I had to wait that long.
No problem. Appreciate your patience.
So you're looking for approval next meeting, correct?
Yes.
So if the board does have any other questions that come up and, or come up and pass it, please send those to me right away so we can, Dave or Hector can address those at the next meeting so we can get this approved. Thank you.
But Ms. Sierra, you're happy with everything that's been discussed, right? I mean, that's kind of why we have the, like that, right?
Yes.
I think we just have one, and I don't know if it's in there, I got to check it. It almost slipped my mind if you remember. It was something we had the discussion with Ms. Augustine about how many semesters they need to do or something.
That's in the curriculum guide.
But it also tagged to the curriculum guide that we couldn't make the change from the curriculum committee until the new guide came out.
The new guide comes out, came out in October.
Right.
So I think we adjusted, I think we adjusted that.
Yeah, so I want to double check this. We got to check those notes from that last curriculum meeting.
Yeah, you wanted, I think you wanted to have a reference page in there so parents could see how many semesters, a highly selective university, college university, that, is that what you're discussing?
No, but then there was also language, so now a student technically could graduate in three years.
Yes, I understand, okay. Early graduate, I'll check on that.
Yes, and so there was some language that we talked in the curriculum committee that needed to be caught in this version of the curriculum handbook.
Dr. Fraas, can you also make a note to look at that? I think it says that early graduates have to complete three and a half years.
Yes.
But I thought we were adding a sentence that in the event, it could be what the principal could.
Something, something there, and I want to make sure during that meeting, there was one or two things that we had to close the loop on this current edition.
Are we coming back to Principal's report?
All right, guys, I'm back. Here we go. Guys, Tuesday has become one of my favorite days.
Because of these long meetings, sir?
Yeah, of course. To present to the board, to the community. But Tuesday is also a time where we have a professional development here at RB. Guys, you guys know our staff, we have nationally board certified teachers, we have AP teachers, Teacher of the Year, we have entrepreneurs, we have coaches, we have an amazing staff. But more importantly, on Tuesdays, we have an opportunity to learn from one another. Today, during our tech talk, we reviewed flipped classrooms. So let me tell you what it's not. In a traditional classroom, you get the lecture, you get the presentation in the class, and you do the homework, and you do the homework at home, right? The practice at home. When a flipped classroom, students learn the content independently, or do the presentation independently, and in the classroom, they apply the content and practice the skills. So I'm really proud that we had a great group of teachers represented that are doing the flipped classroom, and others were motivated and inspired to follow that methodology. So that's why Tuesday has become one of my favorite days here at RB. You know, really proud of my staff and everybody that put it together, Bridget Wilma, Michelle Kaler, Kevin Dybys, and of course, Kylie Link was my Assistant Principal for Curriculum and Instruction. I want to give a big thank you to La Doctora Yvette Dubiel, and she's our partner in our leading equity work here at RB. At our past institute day, we worked on Equity 101, learning what is equity, and we got trained on implicit bias. She has a series of 10 sessions that I'm hoping to continue. You can Google Dr. Yvette Dubiel. She is in almost every major district throughout the state that is doing work on equity. She's a fantastic presenter, and I'm glad that I was able to build that relationship because I want to continue partnering with her as we move equity forward at RB. You know, I'll read you here a few of the sessions that she has. Microaggressions, coaching responsive practices, social constructs, fears of interest, teaching and classroom assessments, stereotype threat and coded racial language, bystand and upstanding, responding to incidents of hate and proactive solutions, things that could only benefit one's pedagogical practice. So I'm really excited to have Dr. Yvette Dubiel on board and working with me and our staff here at RB. Guys, remember for athletic events, I get this all the time, anything in the main gym, NFHSnetwork.com, it does cost a few dollars, and for any events in any other venue, go to RBHS23.net/RBHSlive. Black History Month has been happening the entire month of February, and we've had many events. Open Mic Night, we've wore black in solidarity. Today, Ms. Loges gave some really commemorative lollipops celebrating Black History Month. They're lovely. We have this Thursday coming up, Virtual Movie Night. I don't know what movie we're watching, I will be watching it with everybody. You must register, all this information could also be found on our website. And then this Friday, we're going to have a joint meeting with all the, other culturally based clubs to talk about the vision and future of clubs here at RB. So I'm really excited to, that we brought this together. Big shout out to Dave Mannan, my Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, my deans, and Ms. Loges. Our Student Services Page, you guys got to check out our website, okay? There's been a transformation. Our Student Services Page has been updated with a plethora of information about union trades, apprenticeship, and internship opportunities. How do you get there? It's only three clicks away. Student Services, College Career Planning, and then you select the Union Trades. At RB, we believe education is for everybody, but it looks different for everybody. So I want to thank Ms. Beth Augustine, my Assistant Principal of Student Affairs, Mr. David Weishard, and Ms. Carey, one of our counselors, for helping put this together, and of course, one of our board members, Mr. Durkin, for connecting us with many directors of apprenticeship outside our community. It's really special. You guys, please check out our website, share this information. We'll be sharing it in the building with the community, but it's really exciting to see. And students, we have information for you there, all right, guys? If you want an apprenticeship, you want an internship, go to our website, it's only three clicks away. Student Services, then click on College Career Counseling, and then you click on Union Trades, okay? Guys, check it out. Office hours with the principal is a time for students and myself to meet, it'll be this Thursday at 1:15, okay? Guys, come hang out for a few minutes, you don't got to stay the whole 30 minutes, come hang out, I want to know what's going on with you, okay? So again, office hours with the principal will be at 1:15 this Thursday, February 25. And that concludes my Principal's report.
Ms. Augustine is scheduled to come to discuss staffing with Ms. Link west of March, and she's also going to do a presentation on the website that you received in the Friday update, and that we've been, in the progress of the work that her and Mr. Durkin have been doing to bring up the trade, so I just want to make sure the board's, within two weeks, you'll see that presentation. Thank you, Hector.
Thank you very much. Home business, life safety, capital improvement, sustainability.
No update at this, no update at this time, I think you're going to see the first read for the guardrail and handrail life safety project later in the agenda.
Yearbook contract.
Ms. Matana?
This is the second read, no questions were submitted. We are in the process of finalizing the contract language with Justin's. So the board, if the board chooses, they can approve it tonight pending finalizing contract language with legal counsel, or we can hold off on this and bring it to the March meeting.
Does the board have any concerns about allowing this, including in the resolution with final approval from legal counsel? Something we've done in the past.
Any question, any thoughts here? Okay. Or Ramona?
Your book?
Your book.
Thank you. The Board of Education, Township High School District 208, County Illinois hereby approves a three-year contract with Justin's pending review by legal counsel, is presented in the February 23, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sierra, and it's a roll call.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Ruskoff?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs? Oh, sorry. Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towne?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes. All right, we did student handbook, so this is registration fees under new business.
Kristen, brief update, please.
Included in Board Packet, begins on Board Page 93, is a list of proposed registration and participation fees for the 2021, 22 school year. This current school year, there was a reduction in pay to participate fees due to COVID-19. The administration is recommending that the district return to the previously established pay to participate fees that are outlined in the attached chart. No other changes to the registration fees are being recommended for next school year.
And we did, the board did pass a cap, so that it would be capped at 350. So even if we return to the, you know, our regular fee schedule for pay to participate, there is still some, a safety net there for some families, and we still offer the payment plans.
Okay. That was, that was my question.
Yeah, the cap's still in place.
Yes.
Cap's still in place.
Correct.
Especially in this COVID times.
Correct.
This is a first read.
It is a, it is a first read. The reason that we bring it at this time of the year is that ultimately it goes in the student handbook, and, you know, we typically advertise it then. the student handbook, and, you know, we typically advertise it then. Certainly, we may change last year at a later date in time, but that's why we bring it at this time of the year.
So similar to the handbook, if you, if there's any other specific questions you have, I'd ask that you turn them in for the next meeting so we could address them and try to get this approved for the timing of the printing of the handbook, if possible.
So possibly, the handbook could go on and consent agenda, because there's no questions.
Right. Either way, I'd like to have it approved, because there's only one meeting in March, remember, because of spring break.
Right.
Is that a regular meeting or a?
It's a business meeting.
Okay.
Okay, guardrail and handrail life safety project.
So this is one of our remaining life safety projects, which is to replace several guardrails and handrails throughout the building to bring them up to code. This, we plan this work to be completed throughout the remainder of the 2021 calendar year, so hopefully, beginning during spring break, and then going throughout December when, primarily when students are not in the building at various points throughout that time. The district went out to bid on January 27th, and we held the bid opening on February 11th. The submitted bids are summarized in the chart that is provided. The just, the administration has contacted the lowest bidder, which is Grounded Industrial Services, to review their bid. We also independently reviewed their bid to make sure they uncovered, they covered all the requirements. And then finally, we contacted references for Grounded Industrial Services and received positive feedback. So the administration would recommend that we award the bid to Grounded Industrial Services. You'll notice there's a discrepancy in a cost, right? Cost significantly drops off, and a lot of the more expensive companies are involving a contractor of some sort, so they're outsourcing the work to be completed, whereas Grounded Industrial Services, they will, they will do the work and the manufacturing themselves.
This bid is outstanding, so we can, it's only a first read, and if the board wants more time, they can review it. We did not receive any questions. If the board chose to want to approve this tonight, that could help expedite the schedule to try to get them into, maybe start doing some of these repairs at the end of March during spring break.
Was there any questions or issues from the left side of the table, I guess? The last, I don't have any issues. I, you answered the question, I had a question of why it was significantly different, but I, I understand the piece of they're going to do the work instead of...
There is some fabrication included with this from our facilities meeting this morning with Joel, and, and so the longer we wait to approve it, just the longer it's going to take for them to fabricate some things and eventually install it. But the money is allocated already in our life safety, so it's not necessarily coming out of budgeted items, it's out of our life safety dollars.
So are you asking us to approve it tonight?
I'm asking if the board has any questions or concerns. If they don't, and they don't think any will rise, it could help expedite the process to get a, you know, from a contractor's perspective, then you're, they basically submitted their bid, and now they would be waiting four weeks to find out if they got the, you know, from knowing they were the lowest bid.
I have no objection to that.
I have no objection.
Objections on the right side? Okay. Can you read the motion?
Um, yes, sorry. Is one included? No, there's not one included.
That's hard to do.
Read the intro and just say, approve.
Is it, is it, is there any pending review?
No.
No? No? Okay. Can I just go off the last one and instead of saying Justin's, just say the name of this company?
Approves the...
Well, it's not three-year. A life safety work?
Approves a life safety work on the guardrails and handrails as presented and discussed in the board packet.
Okay, hang on. Guard rails, handrails, okay.
And then just read the company's name.
Sure. Right after, right. Got it. Okay. Phew. Okay. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois hereby approves the life safety work on guardrails and handrails performed by Grounded Industrial Services LLC as presented in the February 23rd, 2021 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Sierra, and this will be a roll call vote.
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes. All right, copier contract? It's always fun.
The current four-year lease agreement for the district's copiers with Gordon Fleisch will be expiring June 30th, 2021. Last fiscal year, we spent $73,484.50 on copiers, and that usage was down a little bit due to the lower months in April and May. So a request for proposal was sent out to six different copier vendors, and we received proposals from three of the copy vendors that are listed in the chart. The district currently has 13 copiers in the building, and so the chart...
That's a lot.
It encapsures, well, they're, the copiers are various sizes, so there are significantly small ones, and then we have very large copiers. The chart below includes not only the lease, but also the operating cost for all 13 copiers. And what's included in the cost per copy is any service for the machines that we may need throughout the extent of the lease. The administration recommends choosing the four-year lease agreement with Proven IT for the Toshiba copiers, and we're recommending the four-year lease to ensure that the district can keep up with the current copier technology as well as the district's needs. We don't want to necessarily lock ourselves into, too long of an agreement. References for Proven IT have been called, and we're positive, and a site visit has been completed at Proven IT's headquarters to evaluate the copiers that are included in the proposal. We currently have Canon copiers, and so we would be changing brands to Toshiba. This will, we do anticipate this being a cost savings to the district. This is a first read, and we will be seeking the board's approval at the March Board meeting.
So I guess my first reaction when you said 13, and I think it was Ms. Towner's too, is have you done an assessment of all 13 are required, or will this group come in and do an assessment about utilization?
We looked at usage of all 13 and felt that they, they were still needed. The cost is, the cost is really driven by the very high functioning copiers. So you can see, like, there are four, I believe, off the top of my head.
Multi-function devices.
Yes, and those are like your heavy-duty copiers that everyone in the building uses on a regular basis.
Well, sure, because they do more than just make copies.
But we also eliminated the classroom printers.
Yeah, I remember, we scrubbed this pretty good four years ago. Tim and I...
We eliminate a lot, a lot of classroom and printers and stuff, so the copiers are also served as printing hubs for departments.
And, and we're also, even still, by, by going with Proven IT and moving, we, we currently don't have the 95 copies per minute machines, so by not only upgrading our machines for our heavy-duty ones, but also switching to Proven IT, we're still saving money.
Sure.
So I think that's important to note, too. We're, we're getting faster machines for some of our heavy-duty machines, and we're still saving the district at least $13,000 a year.
And will you, do you think you'll have an update on the Toshiba devices for, for the March meeting?
What update?
The change over from the Canon machines to the Toshiba, or that's already?
We've already completed the site visit for those.
Okay.
All right. What's the first read, too? We don't need to rush into that one.
I mean, I think the cost savings obviously is, is a positive. I just think as we're, we're talking about these budget constraints, it's one of these things to look at. So you're saying there was a thorough assessment done a few years ago, that, that's a positive. That's good to know.
Well, we cut, we cut quite a bit down a few years ago, and I think that's something we've really got to think about is what's the next level of, because, you know, when we went, we weren't all, we weren't totally on the one-to-one initiative at that point, we are now. So we, you know, what could we take virtual, basically?
Sure.
Now that we've had a whole year of virtual, what, what are we not going to go back to that we were there?
I was just going to say, like, a reevaluation's a good idea, because after teaching virtual for a year, some teaching practices may change, where they may stay...
Well, one thing I would, I would point out to you, yes, we, I would agree with continuing to monitor this. If you, when you walked in today and you got your temperature scan, there's a bunch of tables set up to your right, as well as to the left, where are a lot of printed materials that students are coming in to pick up. And as Michael and Lily have mentioned it sometimes, it helps having some printed materials, even though you're a one-to-one in school, there's some courses where kids still need to, you know, they want to print out a paper when they're doing edits, or they want to, you know, have some paper pencil copies when they're doing math, or working through various problems, or graphing and charting and some of those things, so.
Yeah, I mean, we want to, we want to meet the needs of all learners. I think the concern among the board is, like, a few quick, if we're talking about budget constraints, is this a place where we can have like a quick win, I guess, right?
Well, it looks like we have a quick win.
I think we're doing a pretty, I mean, we're saving...
Twenty grand.
Right. Close to 20 million.
So, that's awesome.
Have a quick win, it's just can we do?
Can we do more in the future, right?
Yeah, can we take it, can we, you know, is there, what is the lock if we do 12 or 11, right? And I, I don't, I don't know that answer. I don't know that answer.
Yeah, I can provide that at the next board meeting. I, I don't think it's going to be significant, because we would be cutting the, the smallest copier.
Right. You're not cutting the business office copier. You're not cutting the...
Business office doesn't have a copier.
That's all I guess, Ali.
There you go, the business office doesn't have a copier.
The, the cost is, the cost is driven by those really high, you know, quick machines that all of the staff use on a regular basis. But I, I mean, I can certainly, I'm not, I, I can certainly provide that cost savings to the board at the next meeting. My recommendation would be to hold off and do an assessment at the end of this upcoming contract to see how the COVID impact has played out. We still don't know what next year's going to bring, so I would be a little hesitant to take resources away from people if it's not going to save the district a lot of money and, and look at how, how the use of copiers has changed post-COVID because of, you know, the relying on technology.
It's a good idea. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you, Kristen.
Sure. Okay, TRS Supplemental Savings Plan.
This is a lot of rapidly changing information. So last week, the Illinois Teachers Retirement System sent out forms and instructions for its new supplemental savings plan, and it's basically requiring every district to pass a resolution so that TRS can set up this 457B, and TRS is required to offer the plan to eligible school districts' employees due to an amendment in the Illinois Pension Code, which became law in August of 2018. So TRS was requiring that school districts participate in this plan and have the, every board take action and return the documents no later than March 31st. As you can imagine, this created a, a big uproar among school districts, because we had no advanced knowledge of this prior to last week, and so a lot of different legal councils got involved and reached out to TRS, including our legal counsel, which is Forensic. So we heard back from Forensic today through an alert, and they shared that TRS will be making modifications to address a submitted question, which was a lot on operational details, like how is this going to play out, when is it going to be rolled out, what are districts' responsibilities, things of that nature. And so, legal counsel imagines that in about a week, they have a better sense of the process and the, and the changes that TRS is going to make, and they feel pretty confident that the March 31st deadline will be revised, and that will be pushed back to give TRS time to address concerns that legal councils had in regards to all of these requirements. So I put it in today as a first read, because when I had that information last week, I know it's important for the board to have two reads, and so I wanted to get it in today. But since then, a lot has transpired, so I don't anticipate bringing this back in March. I, I think it'll come back in, in April or May for the board to take action, and I'll have some additional information at that time.
You can leave it on the agenda and just, in the action sheet next week, or next meeting, just say, "No action at this time," and then just update the background so the board gets a short synopsis of what's changed.
Okay.
Okay, matters for closed. Personnel, purchase, sale, lease, real, real property, probable, imminent, pending litigation, collective negotiation, and school safety. To this point, another chance for visitor statements. No one's coming forward. Discussion items, any requested? I didn't get any. Consideration of items for future meetings? None. Closed session.
Okay, the Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois enters closed session for the purpose of considering appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body. Purchase, sale, or lease of real property, probable, imminent, or pending litigation, collective negotiations, and school safety.
Second.
Mrs. Sierra, is the roll call?
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Resco?
Yes.
Ms. Sierra?
Yes.
Ms. Towner?
Yes.
Ms. Salus?[1779.12]